Order at seven o'clock and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Councilmember Groves.
I am here.
Councilmember Chambers.
I am here.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Here.
And Mayor Dohr.
Here. Consent of the.
Uh.
Motion presented with a change you want to do?
Yeah, I make a motion that we move new business before old business and wait for Warren to get here. He's running a little behind, so we can get the rest of this stuff so pride and smaller people don't have to sit around waiting.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Do you support that motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a correction for the March eighteen minutes, please.
Sure.
I read those and we discussed two things. Rich had mentioned possibly this regard to speed bumps, uh, using narrowing in the roads as an idea to control speed and then also changing Riverside possibly considering not making it a non-through road. If we could add that to the notes of that meeting, please.
Also, there was one agenda item where I was in the yes vote and the no vote, and I only voted yes. I don't remember what. All right, with those changes and the other discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Dohr.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, uh, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Hello, Ken. Uh, to A.D. J. Ellin. Uh, just for clarification, um, I'm unclear on the agenda pack where the water sewer discussion is. Is that under old business or is that?
Washington Street Pride.
Okay, thank you. I'll reserve my comments for you.
Pray Beecham, nine twenty four Riverside. Um, just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, the DPW for the cleanup along the river at Wreck Park. And I want to thank Rich. Uh, we were in an Arbor Board meeting. I had mentioned a big pothole at Hudson and Hunt. And before the day was over, I don't know if the county took care of it or if you did, but it was, uh, addressed. So again, thank you for your prompt service.
Hi, Sam Burnett at, uh, two one five six G Drive. Um, I just wanted to thank the Lowell Police Department. Um, on G Drive, they put in one of the temporary, um, uh, speed indicators. Um, and I think it's really helped slow, slow people down, particularly at that curve on that road. So I think that was a really good, uh, thing, especially with the, uh, the crosswalk for the bike path right there. So I think that was a really, really great, great thing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Little Pride closure.
Good evening, Mayor City Council. Uh, the fourth annual Little Pride will be held on Saturday, June first, two thousand twenty-four, on the Little River Walk. We have been meeting with Little Pride regarding the event and they're requesting a closure for two areas. The first area for closure is the parking, public parking located north of two sixteen North Monroe, which is the Oklahoma property on the state from nine AM to five PM. This encompasses the parking spaces on the, or the panhandle portion of the property. However, um, there will still be access to the boat launch, um, during the entire event. Um, they are also requesting closure at the same time for the northeast section of the parking lot between, uh, City Hall and Chamber of Commerce Building for food vendors. This is similar to the annual River Walk request. The representatives from Little Pride are here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Also, here, Pat, I did lay out, um, what their, what their, um, their map for their event. Um, I am recommending that the Lowell City Council approve the closures requested for Little Pride on June first, two thousand twenty-four from nine AM to five PM.
Paul Patterson, the president of Little Pride, is here giving questions.
Is it the same setup as last year?
A little different. Uh, maybe Paul can talk me through that.
Um, so it's a pretty similar setup to, um, prior years. You know, we're having, um, vendors kind of up and down the sidewalk along the River Walk. The kids' area is located behind the library. Um, the only difference for this year is that we have been able to, um, a complete in the past is not having a lot of food vendors. Um, so we have been able to get some food vendors onboard. And so that's the request for the parking lot closure, um, is to have some space for those vendors to be able to park, um, so people there.
Any other questions?
Well, I know this doesn't really have anything to do with the closure, but I do want to thank them for putting some answers together. I had a few, uh, questions regarding security, not just for your safety, but the safety of the, anybody that's attending.
Yep.
So I had a lot of concern about that and you addressed a lot of those with, uh, with Mike and a team. And I still have a, a couple, but I'm glad to see you're moving forward and how you make this event secure for all participants. So thank you on that part.
Yeah, not a problem. I mean, I know that was definitely a concern. Uh, we also do have a follow-up meeting scheduled on May second with the city as well to kind of go over those detailed security plans. We'll review a full event guide. Um, we're submitting our vendor agreement, um, a finalized map with as much vendor information as we have, assuming everybody, um, gets collected at that point. Um, and then some general information about volunteers and.
I'm the president of the showboat. I understand you guys also want to look at having that outside of the boat. So I don't know if they got hold of you or putting us as a, uh, added insurer on yours, whatever you have for your insurance.
They did not mention that, but I can add that as a rider.
So if you want to have that access to use, utilize the exterior, the, uh, interior, we'll need to get that. So if they haven't reached out to you, I'm sorry they haven't done.
Yeah, no, we did get that, but, um, I can follow up. I think I have all their contact information too, um, and we can update that and submit that as well.
I'd like to thank your organization for listening to what we had to say in, uh, addressing, uh, most of the issues. And there's probably still going to be some in the end, but I do very much appreciate, uh, the, the general, uh, consensus of, you know, you just want to be here, do what you do and, uh, work with others well. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Now with that, I'll make a motion to accept the Little Pride closure.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the road closure. Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor Dohr.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Yep. Thanks, Paul. All right, uh, two oh eight South Hudson rezoned.
Yep, at the meeting of the April eighth, uh, Planning Commission, they are immediately requesting Jay Ricker to rezone two oh eight South Hudson to, uh, I, Zone Level I, General Industrial District. The structure located on the site is industrial in nature. And he has to cease to rezone the property from the R three, R three district to the I General Industrial District in order to bring it to conformity. The property is currently the home to the applicant's electrical contracting business, Rickert Lecter. The site is surrounded on three sides by residential uses into the east, the King Milling property. The zoning map shows that the properties to the east and the north are zone general industrial. However, the properties to the west and south are the same block as the subject property or zone R three, multifamily residential. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve this rezoning, but, uh, Jared, um, Rickert, like, is here to make.
Yeah, so Jay, uh, I sit on planning, so Jay came before us and I'd like Jay to, uh, it is kind of a unique situation. At one time, it was only surrounded two sides of the housing, correct? Because the house across the street from you was a, uh, uh, at a nursing home or was it?
Uh, an adult foster.
An adult foster. So, uh, somehow it became a house. Uh, Jay and his family have owned the building for a while.
It's nineteen fifty-five. It's been.
So we approved it on planning. Uh, we think it's a good use and to get it, uh, to where it needs to be for, for Jay. It makes it more viable for, uh, somebody to move into it as a, uh, business that's not enough to build much of anything on. Uh, it does sit in a flood plain. Uh, when they raised M twenty-one, it kind of took away some of their frontage, but, uh, no, it's a, it's a good fit for what we, what we need.
Did planning feel it was conform to what we're trying to do?
Yep, very much so.
All right, any questions for Mr. Ricker? All right, uh, motion then to approve the rezon.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor Dohr.
Yes. All right, you have a take, Jim.
One other thing, uh, kudos to the department for patching that hole in. They keep moving to the north to try to get around that hole. It's, you can't get around it. Thank you.
All right, uh, charitable gaming requests from the showboat.
Yes.
Uh, Lowell Showboat Six is looking to have charitable gaming events on the showboat as fundraising efforts for their organization. These requests are covered via the, are governed via the Michigan Gaming Control Board. As a result, the local governing body in the municipality in which these events occur must approve via resolution for these entities to move forward and have their charitable gaming events. Attach as Resolution six twenty-four for review. I'm recommending Lowell City Council to approve Resolution six twenty-four, uh, to allow for Lowell Showboat Six to seek a charitable gaming license as presented. Jim, do you have anything to add?
Uh, is this every year we'll have to do that or is this a lifetime until we don't move anymore?
I believe, that's a gaming control question, not, but I believe.
Maybe it says on application.
But I believe, once you, once you submit them, I don't know if you have to come back.
Okay.
From our end, it should just be the resolution.
It should be, yeah, I think.
Everything else you'll have to take up with gaming control.
I, I have nothing.
Jim, how many, how many times a year do they?
Well, we're not sure yet. Matter of fact, somebody came and approached us about this, um, and they want to do a high stakes table. I don't know what that means. To me, ten dollars is a high stake. You know, I can't speak for what other, other people might think is a high stake table, but we're thinking possibly two, uh, is what I had heard about what we're still, well, we need to get this in order to get that and get them really.
Involved.
Involved with it. So, yeah, Liz is handling it mostly, but.
And the high stakes start at five hundred dollars.
I know, you've got some venues, so it's worth about that.
All right, any other questions for Mike or Jim?
Is this, uh, uh, gaming twice a year or is this, could this be a full-time casino-type environment?
Uh, no, it will not be a full-time because we don't have the staff, the, the dates available to do this. Um, so we don't look at it as just, uh, a way to help. Hopefully that we could, uh, raise some funds, but I, I don't believe it's going to be more than two, three times a year, if that, if that.
Gaming control restricts that heavily.
Especially a five-year one.
I know in Michigan laws that we need to be in water, so we'll open water, so we meet all.
Interjection, well, there's no rules, right?
Yeah, we're, we're fine.
All right, um, then I'll look for a motion for Resolution six twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Dohr.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweil.
I'm going to update.
All right, uh, Mr. Cannonfield back there?
Yep.
A social district request.
Yep, the city has received a request from a new restaurant about being added to the social district. The applicant Easy Street Restaurant LLC located at one twenty-three West Main Street falls within the boundaries of the showboat's social district. In order for these entities to receive social district endorsements on their liquor license, they must fall within the district boundaries and approve via council resolution. Attach as Resolution seven twenty-four for review. I'm recommending approval for Resolution of seven twenty-four, Resolution seven twenty-four for the, uh, um, for the, uh, Easy Street Restaurant to have their social district endorsement.
All right, any questions for Mike or Greg? All right, I'll make a motion then for Resolution seven twenty-four, Easy Street. I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Dohr.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
And Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Also, shameless plug, if you haven't been there yet, it's. That's fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Greg. Moving on, Recreation Passport for Creekside.
Rich.
Rich.
All right, the Lowell Border Club of Lowell is partnered with the City of Lowell to rebuild Creekside Kingdom Playground. Uh, the playground rebuild effort is supported by the City of Lowell Parks and Recreation Plan, uh, dated twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, and is listed as a high priority project. Uh, to assist with the funding efforts, uh, the city has applied for a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport Grant. Money for this grant is derived from the sale of Recreation Passport stickers, uh, for State Park entrance. Ten percent of the revenue is used to fund Recreation Passport Local Grant Program. The grant program may only be used for local development projects. The program is focused on renovating and improving existing facilities at parks, which Creekside Kingdom qualifies as renovation. For the purpose of this grant application, the city must be the applicant, which we are, and the city council must authorize a resolution for the purpose to complete the grant Recreation Passport Program application to renovate the playground, Creekside Kingdom, using Recreation Passport Grant. It's a small project, it just has to be a resolution in the form of this. Uh, the applicant is also responsible for providing the public adequate opportunity to review and comment on the proposed application. We want to agenda item, open the discussion in a normal public meeting in the Lowell City Council. Uh, so I recommend City Council approve Resolution zero eight twenty-two four, which is attached, and support the application of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport Grant to seek funding to rebuild Creekside Kingdom Playground with donated matching funds. And you'll see in the packet as well, uh, we've put on the resolution, approved some of the, um, donated fund amounts. So, um, Lowell Community TV Fund has donated forty thousand dollars, a private business that donated forty thousand dollars. And then Lowell Border Club is going to do a lot of fundraising for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to finish up the four hundred thousand dollar goal. And if we get this grant, it'll be a, a big boost to the private.
All right, all right, before we do that, I'll refer public comment on the passport grant application.
Just, just for your F I, if you don't know that, you used to have to opt in to get it when you go to the Secretary of State. Now it's already going to be included, so you have to opt out if you don't want it. Uh, I recommend you opt in. You just take it the first year, so it helps us raise some funds. But that is different.
Any public comment? No? All right, closed public hearing. Can I look for a motion for Resolution eight twenty-four?
I will make that motion.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Dohr.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, unrelated, Rich, do you know off the top of your head when, uh, picket order forms?
I do that. It was filed on the calendar.
Okay.
The city.
All right, we're still taking them?
Yes.
Okay, there are numbers of, of last week. All right, perfect. Uh, number F, uh, off-premise tasting license for the Old Theater.
Yep, the city has received a request from Arabian Sun's Distillery to establish a tasting room inside the Old Theater located at three thirteen West Main. Part of their application with the Michigan National Patrol Commission, they need a resolution approved from the city council allowing them to move forward with this license. Um, I don't know if the requestee is here tonight. Um, we asked him to attend, um, and, um, just answer any questions as soon as he would like to do. And I'm recommending approval for Resolution of nine, for Resolution nine twenty-four.
There you are.
Evening, everyone. My name is Jacob Paula. Smackdown David Paula. We're the owners of Marina and Sun's Distillery, based out of, uh, obviously Lowell, just north. Kind of our arrowhead golf course, and we're, uh, seeking for, uh, off-premise tasting license to co-op and partner with the Old Theater right here in town. I, uh, so I, I graduated, we actually moved here in ninety-five. I graduated 'oh five. And we started distilling in, uh, twenty twenty-two. And we just want to keep everything as local as possible and share with the community our heritage and roots of, um, pure fruit alcohol that we manufacture. So, we're another place, uh, well, we figure we found a great partnership with, uh, the Old Theater that we'd like to co-op with and, uh, essentially use our license to, you know, establish with them.
Any other?
Yeah, exactly what I did. So, uh, as, as if you know, I partnered with Love Wines and, uh, we have a wine tasting bar in our place, so, yeah, I, I know what you're going through, and I've done that. So, uh, if you're looking for a motion, I would like to see this, uh, come to tuition. So I'll make a motion for Resolution zero nine dash twenty-four.
I'll support that motion.
If they want to come back and, and do the, um, what do you call it?
Social.
Social district, you'd have to come back and do that, the special, that's why I think it would be.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor Dohr.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Termination agreement for the youth fair. Rich again.
With the demolition of the federal buildings at Wreck Park, uh, Kent County Youth Fair Association, uh, presented the city a termination from Fairgrounds Use Agreement, a release of liability document. Now, the purpose of this document is to formally recognize the termination of the agreement and fulfill obligations of the Fairgrounds Use Agreement. The Fair Use Agreement formally ended on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and the youth fair had ninety days from that date to remove buildings and restore the great Recreation Park. As part of the Fairgrounds Use Agreement dated April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and in accordance with section eleven of the agreement, uh, KYC A A is required to remove at its cost all its personal property and the buildings. Upon removal of the buildings, the landowner of the building shall be restored to its normal grade. Personal property of the youth fair not removed shall be deemed abandoned if it remains in the fairground property for more than thirty days after the termination of the agreement and title to the same shall thereupon be passed to the city unless otherwise agreed to in writing by the city and the youth fair. If the youth fair buildings are not removed within ninety days after the termination of this agreement, they shall be deemed abandoned by the, uh, Kent County Youth Fair Association and title of the same shall pass to the city. So that's a quote right out of the agreement. Uh, the Department of Public Works has been working with the youth fair to finalize the permitted demolition of structures, demolition of the buildings, and the punch lists developed during the two onsite inspections. Uh, it's anticipated, anticipated to be completed by March thirty. I would say I wrote this a while ago, uh, so it's all done. And it is in accordance with section eleven of the original agreement. And long areas will be seeded when the weather permits. They did provide grass seed for us, so as soon as it warms up enough, we'll seed them. So we're recommending that, uh, City Council approve the termination of Fairgrounds Use Agreement and release of liability as presented by the Kent County Youth Agricultural Association. And then also included in this, I, uh, attached some photographs of the current condition of the fairground properties, just for your reference. And also the termination, uh, agreement is attached as well.
Rich, can I ask why, uh, we're seeding it and when they did all that nice finished grading, uh, they didn't seed?
Well, we asked them to hold off actually because, uh, when they ended in March, very end of March, weather really wasn't conducive to, uh, good grass seed planting. So they provided the seed for us and we have access to a, a seed here. That's what we thought, probably just take it out ourselves. And we're sure better to reduction that.
And they did do a fantastic job of eliminating everything. So, once the grass is up and grown, you'll never know whether it's.
All right, um, motion then to approve the termination of Fairgrounds Use.
I'll make that motion.
What do you say?
Support.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor Dohr.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. All right, uh, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Neva- Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of businesses and beautify our community, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Dohr, Mayor of the City of Lowell, do hereby proclaim every last Friday in April as Arbor Day in the city, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees' woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations. Fifteenth day of April, year two thousand twenty-four. Any discussion on that?
Yes, there will be an official ceremony on the twenty-sixth of April. I'm not sure exactly what time, Kappa? Is that what I'm saying? Eight, eight AM?
Eight AM.
Right here off the park.
Eight AM.
Eight AM.
Pets.
We'll be planting a, a tree in the honor of Mr. Jim Hodges.
Oh. All right, well then, so be a proclaim. All right, now we'll move on to the Washington Street Pride. That horn should be here in just a couple of minutes, but we're good enough to get started, Mike.
Sure. So, um, I want to summarize kind of some of the history and, um, what's being presented in front of you, um, as we move forward. So, Susie, go to the next slide, please. If you actually hit two slideshells and go to the next slide. So, I've been city manager here for eight years, almost will be eight years in September. And, um, this is kind of the history is when I first came to the community and my, my knowledge of the systems as to where we currently at. When the city first built their first water, you know, when they built their first water plant, they funded the, uh, water distribution, sewer collection, uh, the upgraded wastewater plant in the, in the eighties. The majority of these funds were funded through grants through the, through the federal government. Um, and it wasn't from the revenues received in the city. It was, it was significant help from the federal government. The federal government does not do that anymore. Those, those funding options primarily don't exist. Um, the water and just some of the, the highlights of the system is that the water treatment and the wastewater treatment facilities we have are some of the highest quality level of treatments. Both, but with that, they, they are much more costly to operate. Um, and then your normal limited treatment facilities. For example, Rocker, Cedar Springs, Portland, they have limited treatment, water treatment facilities. They don't have, they don't have the type of facilities we have. They don't have the type of infrastructure we have. Um, so going on through the years, uh, we've, you know, we've, we've gotten our useful life out of, out of many, many items in our system. And, um, it, we've come to the point where a large line of items, a large number of items in our system are deteriorating and it has to be replaced. Um, unfortunately, um, these, we really have no op, we have to go on our own. We're on our own for all of this stuff. It's not, we've looked at different funding options, um, tried to, to, to look at many different things and, and Warren can, can, can help you explain this to in a minute, but coming into, coming into when I arrived here in twenty sixteen, um, when we, when I came here in twenty sixteen, obviously the road, you know, the roads have always been an issue. I'm not, I, I'm not trying to lay blame. It's just the fact of the matter is, we have not invested in our infrastructure in this state. Um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna state reasons why. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna state the fact that we have not properly invested in our infrastructure. And when I first came to town, um, you know, and working with my staff and our engineers and, and so forth, um, you know, I would obviously always talk about the roads and my staff would tell me, well, if you think the roads are bad, just wait till you learn what's going on with all of our other, other issues. And really, we're, you know, our, our under our infrastructure is, is not, is not in, in, in good shape in many areas. So in twenty sixteen, um, we started the process with, through the state of Michigan with Stormwater Asset Management Grant Program. Through that, that was a three-year process to get an update on what needs to, to, to be done. And basically, in addition to that, we did a water reliability study that assessed our water, our, our water management system. And basically, um, the biggest issues that came out of the wastewater, out of the SAW grant, uh, were that, um, the, the, the issue, we have, we have three major I and I, we have I and I across the whole network of the system. It's like a death by a thousand cops. But the major issues, when we addressed the plan, were, there was a major issue at Foreman Street, Monroe and Washington. Those were the three areas that we needed to address. And the, the cost to, the cost to address the one on Foreman was relative, was, was significantly less because it was, it was, it was a distinct area. The issue came about as we were going through, um, Monroe and Washington was basically, we're better off just replacing everything, um, and starting, starting, starting anew. And, um, at the time, we were also, one of the things that we also held off during that period was during twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, the only road we paved was Jefferson Street. I would have liked to have gotten going then. The issue. The issue was, as we, as we said then, the worst thing you can do is pave a road and then five years later have to go back and rip it out because you have a water and sewer issue underneath. I, I like to think we have not done that in our tenure for the work that we've done. So going forward, we have the city income tax. We developed a street plan based off the street, off the income tax. It failed. We have been, we stretch every dollar in the city. As council knows, we're very creative in trying to address our needs. We don't get a lot of money. One of the, one of the, one of the, one of the advantage, you know, we are, we are a great community. We have great quality services. I would argue we're a low to moderate income community. We are, we also manage our, our finances and our, and our, and our utilities very well. The issue that comes about is the fact that, quite honestly, we are not economically depressed enough or we don't mismanage our systems or our finances to the point that we don't, that when it comes to these bigger projects like grant funding through USDA or even the state of Michigan, we don't get looked at. We don't, we don't get enough points to even qualify on the application for grant funding. So we've been looking at this stuff for years and it's been, you know, it's just, it's just the way it is. So when the income tax failed, we came back and looked at it and, and we knew that we had to, we had to address Monroe and Washington streets. They had to be done. And we knew, after starting researching and doing so, doing a number of, just looking at what other communities were doing, we knew that we had an opportunity through United States Development, World Department of Development, United National Development Program for loan funding at very low interest rate compared to the, to the market. And in addition, we could extend the life of that loan to allow us to be able to manage it in a more authoritative fashion. This is different, this is much greater than trying to utilize the, the current bond markets. Granted, interest rates were lower at the time. Warren can answer any questions on that. So we started in two thousand and twenty, we started working with USDA to start the process of moving these projects. We have worked, we have worked on, we completed Monroe last year and you, in front of you tonight is, is phase two, which is Washington. We have worked, we have worked very hard, I would say, for the last six years trying to, trying to address this issue. At the time, we, we had opted into the marijuana, the marijuana, adult use marijuana facilities. We knew we were going to get some revenue, but at the time, we didn't really, council as we know, we didn't really think we were going to get a bunch of revenue for this. We knew we were going to get revenue based on the number of facilities. We had no idea what this would entail. It was about twenty, I think our first payment in two thousand and twenty-one was, was twenty-eight thousand dollars, but we, but at that point in time, we started realizing, okay, once these facilities get approved and get built up, do the math, do the sales statewide, we, we have an opportunity here. The other thing we did at the time was if we developed a street asset management plan, which we approved, we put a seven-year plan in place, that allows us to utilize all of our street funds any way we want. Where before seventy-five percent of your funds had to be used for local streets, twenty-five percent had to be, had to be, for, for me, I'm sorry, seventy-five major, twenty-five percent local. Thirteen point four miles of our roads in our city are local streets. So as we started doing projection, very conservative projections, we, we, we put a seven-year road plan together. We started this in, well, we started the original plan around two thousand and twenty-one, but in, actually, two thousand and twenty-two. But in two thousand and twenty-one, we started our first project. We knocked out Andy, Elizabeth and Suffolk and Howard, those were the first four streets we did. From there, we also did, we also addressed the INI issue at Foreman. We also got money from state to pay Foreman in that area. So we started to see some positive momentum on trying to address our utilities. We've now put a seven-year road plan in place where when we first put the plan in, we've added additional streets and additional, and additional, and we've been able to move up streets in the plan faster than we ever could. And we've tried to do it in a way, and, and we've tried to address it in a way that we've, we're trying to address different areas of the city as we go. We're trying not to do one area all at once. Right now, we're focused on the east side, but we've done a number of projects on the west side. We do have a project at the southwest side of the city this summer. We have, eventually, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna address Riverside. So we're looking at continuing to add more and more projects as we go forward. So this is a part of the puzzle. The other part of the puzzle is obviously the water and the wastewater treatment facilities. The city does not need to grow those facilities, but we have agreements with township that we are, that we really are, are at their beck and to have to do it, especially more on the water end than the wastewater end. However, it makes more sense to partner together. One of the issues that I've always felt is that we have, the city probably is not coming out ahead in, in those agreements going forward. And we have, we, you know, we are, we are working on that.
You mean we haven't come, come out ahead going in the previous?
In the past, yeah. I think we're, I, I think we're at a point now, we've been, we're not, we're not as far along with the water and wastewater treatment plans, but I think here in the next six to eight months, I'm very optimistic, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a solution that I believe is gonna be beneficial to not only the township, but I think it's probably gonna be more beneficial to the city than we've ever had in our previous agreements. I'm very, I'm very optimistic and I can tell you, probably three, four months ago, Marty and I, who've been involved with this for over five years, did not feel that way. So I can't get into all the specifics regarding it at this time, but I can tell you that this is a giant, complex puzzle. And so we are trying to come up with, trying to address as much infrastructure we have based on the resources available to us. So if you go to the next slide, please. I want to kind of talk about the Washington Street project. So, and that's where we're placing a foreign water line, which is approximately seventy years old, to an eight-inch line from front to Fremont Street. Ralph, correct me if I'm wrong, the Eagle standard now is an eight-inch main, correct? Thank you. Okay. We're also replacing a sixty-five-year-old sewer line from Main Street to Fremont. The sewer line varies from an eight-inch to twenty-four-inch line. This sewer line is a significant contributor to infiltration and fill problems straining our wastewater treatment plant. As I mentioned, this is one of the three critical areas by the SAW grant. The road needs to be replaced as well. We can debate if the road condition is probably the worst in the city. It's up there. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say which, you know, I'm not gonna rank them, but anyhow, it's two, yeah. But we are in a situation where this needs to be addressed. If you go to the next slide, please. So we have worked on this project for a number of years. And we recently went out for bid and we received a bid, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the projected cost of three, three point five million dollars at the, at the cost of three million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Of this, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is attributed to the USDA water loan and then just under two point five million dollars is attributed to the USDA sewer loan. There's also a forty-five thousand dollar lead service allowance. The city must commit a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of our funds to this project and then for the sewer end, then fifty-eight thousand dollars on the other end. One of the things that, that is not available to us is we cannot use any of the USDA money to remove any of the landlines we find along Mon, well, Washington or Monroe Street. So, but they will allow us to do is use our funds for our commitment towards that. These loans are a forty-year loan funded by the USDA with an interest rate of two point eight seven five percent. Warren, correct me if I'm wrong, Warren Kramer from Municipal Financial Consultants is here tonight. He is our financial advisor. I have been working with Warren on these issues for many, many years. And correct me if I'm wrong, we're probably looking at about a four and a half to five percent interest rate on the open bond market, correct?
And again, Mike, I think you pointed it out correctly. It'd be about a four and a half percent. You're at two point eight seven five percent, but you've got another fifteen years over which to amortize, you know, the debt, so it significantly lowers, you know, your debt service payment, correct?
And I think it's important that there's, you know, how will be your additional interest for early repayment?
That is correct.
That's important. Can we take a minute to introduce Warren to?
Absolutely.
Please do.
Good evening. First of all, I want to apologize to all of you. I took a unintended half-hour detour. You have absolutely beautiful countryside in our city. And I'm really glad my wife isn't here tonight because she's, she'd be calling me, were you here on time? And I would not, and for that, I, I apologize. But yes, I have been working with Mike on this a long time. You guys were very gracious. I was supposed to be at your last meeting, but I, I was visually impaired. I never wanted to be that guy talking about all of his infirmities, but I've been getting cataracts taken care of and I had to wait to get my new glasses. So I'm sorry I couldn't make it last week. I am glad I'm here, albeit late, so forgive me. So as Mike said, we've been working with the city. We're very grateful, you know, for the opportunity to be working with the city. And we did talk at length last week, you know, regarding the impact of the proposed financings on the city's current water and sewer rates. I think it's important to remember that this, you know, is, you know, just kind of the tip of the iceberg in the investment in infrastructure. You have municipalities whole across the state that benefited tremendously and kept rates artificially low because, you know, they had infrastructure, you know, that was largely funded by the federal government and it's kind of like out of sight, out of mind. You don't see it, you don't really think about it until there's a problem. Well, the problems have, you know, come not just here in Lowell. This is something we're seeing all across the United, I mean, the United States and especially Michigan. So, you know, INI has been a huge issue. I think the focus on addressing that will take a lot of pressure off, you know, the treatment, the sewer treatment facility. As, as Mike said, we have an opportunity to finance it at low market rates and, you know, you know, and as Mike said, you know, no one's pointing fingers. No one likes to raise rates. No one likes to, you know, see, you know, services that they pay for monthly increase. And they have been kept down artificially low for a long period of time. And I, first of all, I have to applaud you for taking the steps necessary, you know, to address these infrastructure needs. And by, you know, with the ability to finance it through USDA, again, you know, you don't get the benefit of the grant dollars because you're a relatively affluent, comparatively affluent community and the population served, it's all really driven, you know, by wealth levels. And, but the fact that you can amortize this over a forty-year period, meaning, you know, people that benefit, you know, from this, these improvements that you're making, you know, even twenty years, thirty years down the road will help pay, you know, for these improvements.
Yeah. So one of the advantages to this is even when we did Monroe, we financed Monroe this same route. And we saved approximately one point one five million dollars over the life of that loan. And on this loan, we're projecting over a million dollars. So we're, we're saving over, by this finance option, we're saving two million dollars. So our rates could have been significantly higher if we didn't qualify for USDA. We're lucky because we're in a rural area that we can qualify for USDA. There's many areas that are not, this is a program that's not available to many communities statewide. I can tell you, I would have loved to have had USDA for some of the projects I did in my former community, but we didn't, we didn't qualify for it. So it's, it's a low interest loan, yes, but it's significantly lower than what you're going to get out of the open market. And just to kind of enhance the need for this project, I've invited, I've asked Ralph Brecken to come tonight. Ralph Brecken is our utility supervisor and he manages our, our utility lines for the city. And Ralph, just correct me if I'm, just, just kind of state what we're facing with us not addressing these lines. We, just kind of let us know.
As you stated, Mike, the infrastructure is extremely old. The water main has added its expected life expectancy plus a few years. The sewer mains were at one and a half times the life expectancy on the entire sewer main, end to end of the project. We have two blocks within Washington Street that already had a second sewer main put in place and that's having problems. So this project will take care of two blocks that if we do not do the project, will have to address as emergency repairs. We also have issues with hydraulics in the systems supplying for fire protection, public safety. And the size of those water mains right now, being a four-inch, extremely small, outdated, old material. And the last part of it is this main constitutes not the entire source, but a majority of the source of water that supplies the east reservoir on this side of the river, which also that reservoir supplies all the water to the high-pressure district up on the hill. So if there is any issues with this water main, it can have substantial impact on supplying residents' water on the east side of the town. So that just states some of the obvious issues that we're faced with. So I am very happy to see this, these projects potentially come to fruition and it's, well, time to do it professionally.
Ralph, maybe you have an answer to your donor. How long have those mains been in the ground on Washington?
The, part of the, the water mains are anywhere from, the water mains average anywhere from fifty-four to seventy-four years old, with the majority being seventy-four years old.
What's the normal?
Uh, when you start to get, I think a lot of times fifty years, fifty to seventy years, seventy is pushing that, would you say?
Yes.
Usually in engineering, they look at a fifty-year life expectancy on these water mains. The sewer mains are all clay. They're averaging, I think even fifty years is pushing it for clay sewer mains and the average age is seventy-one years. So we're about one and a half times the life expectancy for the sewer.
Yeah. We ran cameras down the sewer mains. It was amazing to me, the ground law penetration was, water just was coming in, which overwhelms the waste treatment plant and that was a big eye-opener that we need to address that because the state sooner or later would say, you need to address this and we don't care. So doing our due diligence and correcting the underground problems and like Mike said, you know, we don't need to put a new street in two years later, rip it all back up.